Well, good evening, everyone. Glad you're all here. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to President Duke for her to conduct. Perry, Carnegie Library Board Meeting.
Okay, roll call, please. Stroller.
Here.
Demant.
Here.
Duke.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Okay, we do have a forum, and tonight we have Pastor Erin Summers of the Baptist Church to give us our opening prayer.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, as we are here on this Monday, following such a wonderful weekend, Lord, we are so grateful and thankful for this gift of love and generosity that you have provided us as humanity in the form of your Son, Jesus Christ. Father, it's because of that that we have the opportunity for peace, an opportunity for stability in our lives. Father, because I have that faith and relationship with him, I come before you tonight, and I ask you on behalf of those that are present, that are involved in the leadership of this community in so many ways, Lord, would you please provide wisdom and guidance to each and every one of their decisions this evening? Father, would your presence be upon us in this place so that we can walk away with our heads high, knowing that we've not only honored the citizens of this community, but we've also honored its Creator? In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, item one on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Any items wishing to be removed?
Motion to approve.
Okay, roll call, please. Stroller.
Yes.
Demant.
Yes.
Duke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Okay, item four on our agenda is any comments from those assembled, any comments needing to be made tonight? Okay, seeing none. Item five is approval of the contract with the Department of Libraries on the conference grant. Is there any questions on that? It was provided in the paper.
Motion to approve this.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Stroller.
Yes.
Demant.
Aye.
Duke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Okay, item six is we have our quarterly presentation from Sherry Cowan, Head Librarian. Give us an update on what's going on at the library.
Got like a stack of papers here. Just my reports in case you guys ask questions or anything. Okay, first of all, I want to say thank you for approving my conference grant. I will be going there Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week. It's in Ardmore, so I plan to pick up a lot of good things from there to bring back to our library. So, a lot of classes, and they're full days. So, I start early, eight o'clock Wednesday morning, so it's going to be really educational. And also, I want to say this because everybody's been waiting. We have ebooks. We are now up in the times. It's available. We are a part of the Oklahoma Virtual Library Consortium, which is right out of Stillwater. That's the head of it all. Basically, you can download Overdrive on your tablets, devices, iPhones, anything that can do any kind of e-reader. Just go out to your iTunes Store, App Store, wherever you got to go. It's Overdrive Media Console. This is kind of for the public, too, because I don't really have a chance to get it out there. And download that. It'll take you out to Oklahoma Virtual Library, which you will be able to find our library and search us, what we have in the consortium. Check it out. Checks out for two weeks. You just need your library card number and your phone number. Log in. No fines. You, after two weeks, if you haven't read it, just disappears off your device. Checks in. No fines, no nothing. So, it's really kind of cool. We've had a bunch of people coming in. I helped a guy today on his phone. Spent about 30 minutes getting it all set up for him, so he's all ready to go. It's all saved. He just has to go search now. So, he's pretty ecstatic about that. Because of that change, we also, at the same time, had to get a new automation system, the thing that checks, the system that checks out books to people. We had Destiny Follet, which is school-based, academic-based. So, we were making it work for us. It really was not based for public libraries. So, on that note, we, we had to switch everything over in the midst of all this, which was kind of a headache, but it's so much better. There's so many perks to it. It is a little bit more expensive annually, but that's covered in budget. The migration fee was covered with state aid, so there was really no, you know, really budgeting. I have the extra in the budget to do it. So, I switched that over. That being said, we now are hosted offsite. We do not have to, we're sorry, we are hosted offsite. No need for a server, for space in here, in our library. It's all anywhere else. So, that eliminates the need for us to purchase another server. We were out of space. We were going to have to come up some way to get a new server, $6,000, $7,000. Just didn't see that happening. So, it kept us from having to do that. Our data is now in multiple places. The main hub is in Texas, three different spots around the United States backed up. So, if there's a natural disaster, takes out one of those spots, our data's backed up. So, that's less we have to worry about. We are available online. Before, you couldn't go out and search your catalog from home. You had to be in the library or on the library's Wi-Fi. You could not go from China, from Texas, you couldn't go anywhere and search. Now, you can do that. You can also place things on hold and renew your items online. It sends out text messages. It's really cool. It's a, I mean, there's a lot of perks to it. So, it was just that time we made that change. We're still transitioning. So, if you come in there and were like, "Oh, I hate this system," it's because you can't figure it out yet. I mean, we're still, it was kind of abrupt. We have, we're transitioning, so we're still learning all the new stuff. As you guys have probably heard, Linda Luthy retired. She had some family things that she had to take care of that were more important. And so, she's, she's gone and filling the position of part-time. Melinda, the part-time reference, moved up to Assistant Librarian. She was promoted, so, and she's doing a great job. So, we miss Linda. We really do, having her around there. But I told her, I said, "It's more important. Your family's more important." So, but she's still around there every once in a while. We get her to come in and volunteer, so we haven't completely lost her. Our RIF books, we had our spring distribution, and 732 books were distributed, which is really awesome. Last distribution, we started giving it to the DHS ran home daycares. And so, it was the first time. They really love it. We did that again this year. We had more distributed last time, but we had one of the head start, or one of the daycares close in town, I think step-by-step closed. So, we're down a little bit, but it was distributed to Head Start, Christ Lutheran Learning Center in upper elementary schools. And we want to thank the street department. They had to move our books back and forth for us again. So, I want to thank them for their help to cart the books back and forth. And Linda Branson and Linda Dunn attended the summer reading program workshop in Oklahoma City, in Orange County. They got a lot of new ideas and cool things for this summer reading program. Our theme for the children is dig into reading, and then we're going to study underground. So, we're going to have like, you know, stuff about moles and just bugs and dirt. I mean, it's going to be kind of cool. I mean, it's really going to be kind of cool. And roots, and we've got a bunch of, we have a school, the whole Orlando School, they're giving us a bunch of, it looks like vines, like you would find in the safari or in the rainforest and stuff. They donated those to us because they didn't want them, they couldn't use them. They were like, "Wow, those can be good for like underground stuff. It can make you look like you're underground roots and stuff." So, we're using those in our meeting room to set up for it also. It's going to be kind of cool looking. So, they got those cool ideas. She also found out, Linda found out, that they're really starting to crack down on summer reading program and the distribution of funds. They want better reports being taken by all libraries. They want all documents, all paperwork to be kept five years prior. They want you to keep it for five years before you can toss it, do whatever with it, which we keep it anyways. But this is just something that they're really cracking down on because these are free funds. These are free money, and free money, it's just like any grant. You have to keep that stuff. You've got to show where you used it and all that. So, we're going to have to sign some agreements and, of course, keep all the documents up to five years. I'm almost done. If we don't do that, of course, we could lose the funding for summer reading program if those things are not, if we don't comply. I received grant money and just waiting on the check. If I remember, I mentioned about an archival grant, trying to preserve all of our old documents, old materials, old photographs. We have the original letter signed by Andrew Carnegie for the building. We have a building lease and all, or land lease, land grant, and all that. That stuff is just, it's sitting over there in the elements, and it needs to be better protected because once those are gone, they're gone. So, we have, we applied for a grant. We got someone to come in and do a report on the building, check our humidity, check the building, what shape it's in, and gave us like a 10 or 15-page report on things that the building lacked or was good in, humidity levels, all that, for us to better manage those things. So, I've got $500 to start purchasing some supplies, and as soon as I receive that check, I'll start purchasing. And, of course, I already mentioned that I'll be attending LLA. So, I think that's it. For circulations, we're just, we're still doing really good. We're extremely busy. Stay busy, so.
Thank you, Sherry. Any questions? Okay, item seven on the agenda.
Thank you.
Roll call, please. Stroller.
Yes.
Demant.
Aye.
Duke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Shelby. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Perry Municipal Authority. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Here.
Demant.
Present.
Duke.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Paul.
Here. We do have a quorum present. At this time, we'll move to item number one, the consent agenda. Items, item wishing to be removed, you can do so.
I think the motion to approve the consent agenda is second.
The motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Let's go to the vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Demant.
Yes.
Duke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes, item number four, comments from those assembled. Anybody wish to make comments, not on our PMA agenda, we'll take those from you. Comments from those assembled? Comments from those assembled? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five, Proclamations, Commissions, Reports, and Inquiries of the Government. Seeing none, we'll move on to the money round. Item number six, presentation by Drake Wrights of, from the Oklahoma Municipal Power Authority of an award for the Competitive Utility Grant. Mr. Rockes, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to be here tonight with you in Perry. It's always good to be in Perry. CUP program is a program established by Blue River Committee of City Personnel back in 1995 to help cities evaluate their electric utility operate like a business, and we're happy to be here tonight to, again, award Perry that certification through the CUP program. Perry was first certified in CUP in 2005, and it takes a little bit of effort. You have good city staff working on it to keep it up to date, and it looks at key components in your system. It looks at the system maintenance plan, your electric system maintenance plan, looks at emergency action plan, looks at your marketing, keeping track of your outages, in other words, reliability of your system, and your training requirements. In addition, we provide points on load factor improvements, and I'm happy to say that Perry will have two awards in the load factor area. Your load factor in Perry is 43.7. The OMPA system load factor is 41.99. So, it's a, congratulations to your CUP staff, and I think tonight we have Brian, and we have Autumn, and the mayor, and anybody else that wants to be, and Dixie, yes. Sorry, Dixie. So, she'll put some in there. No. It is a pleasure for me to make a little presentation, and for the photo op, we do happen to have a check, but it won't work through the bank.
No numbers are in.
Before, before we take this picture, and I'm glad that these folks that are here, and I'm not, I'm going to ask to not be in the picture. For a number of years, we had an employee that really worked hard through the CUP program and did a lot of the certification for us. This was the first year that we have not had that employee to do that. And these people that you see in the room, right here, specifically our clerk, Brian and Autumn, single-handedly pulled together what we couldn't think could be done. They made this award possible by their time and effort, and it just would not be appropriate for me to sit in because I didn't do anything but be mayor. So, Dixie, if you and Mary and Brian and Autumn would pose for the picture, and Dixie, especially you, thank you for the hours and hours that you put in. These are the real workers that made it happen right here.
No, listen, I want to stand behind the chair.
I know you want the small bills, right? The chairman is absolutely right. It's a real team effort this year, and we really appreciate your staff getting on the program and getting the application in. OMPA has 18 cities that are certified in this program, and so, we're happy to have Perry. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Drake. All right, we'll move to item number seven, new business. Any new business needs to come before the PMA? Seeing none, we'll move to item number eight.
Motion to adjourn.
And motion is second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Demant.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. All right, now we'll open up the regular meeting of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Perry. It is 6:32 on April the 1st. No fooling. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Here.
Demant.
Present.
Duke.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Paul.
Here. We do have a quorum present. At this time, we'll move to the consent agenda. Items wishing to be removed, we'll take those.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Shelby. Thank you, Marvin. We have a motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Let's move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Demant.
Yes.
Duke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now, we move to item number four, comments from those assembled. Anybody wish to make comment, not on our city council agenda, we'll take those from you. Comments from those assembled? Comments from those assembled? Comments from those assembled? Now, item number five, Proclamations, Commissions, Reports, and Inquiries. Seeing none, we turn to item number six, which is to consider approval of Resolution 2013-04 of the City Council. The wrestling capital of the world to the National Olympic Committee and International Olympic Committee Executive Board opposing and requesting a reversal of their decision to eliminate wrestling as an Olympic sport. It's my understanding that Councilman Norman would like to go over this with us, so Lynn, you're on.
We're just a small town. Wrestling is king, and this is our way of expressing our displeasure. And Bryce, if you could delve into the nuts and bolts of this.
Well, I do think that the resolution is kind of self-explanatory. It does point out just the, you know, the excellent reputation and the excellent success that, that the Perry, Maryland wrestlers have had since 1922. I guess that's when they started their program. Also, I did a little research. Apparently, there were three International Olympic Committee Executive Board meetings. Two of them have been held, one is still to be held, so if we got this thing out, we would at least express our opinion. Thirty-three governors in the United States have written the International Olympic Committee Executive Board stating their displeasure in removing wrestling from the Olympics. Now, that isn't supposed to occur till 2020, but as, as far as I know, the decision has not yet been made to reverse that decision. At least, that's what I got off Google a few days ago. So, you know, the thought here is, it's, it's more of a putting our two cents in, showing them what our background is, what our community's background is, and, and our objection to them doing that. You know, I think the real loss is, you know, what would the net effect of this be? Would it stop young Perry athletes and other athletes from not wanting to go into wrestling because they would perhaps never have a shot? Or does it just make wrestling less of a sport? I think the other thing that the resolution pointed out was how key wrestling was in the original Olympics, in the Greek Olympics. It was the first event other than a foot race that they ever had, and it's been, it's been something that's been key in the Olympics for years. You know, I guess it's sacrificed because of TV ratings. I guess the ice dancers and toboggan sledders are more fun than, than wrestling, but.
What's the people, throw that little ball on the ice, what's that called?
Curling.
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 That's hard.
I live in Sheldon, Hawaii.
Well, you know, they brought in synchronized diving.
Swimming.
Synchronized swimming. Well, diving, too. Two people go up there and dive and get. Wow, that's entertainment. We never get to see the wrestling, you know, and there's a lot of people interested in it. A lot of people will watch.
You've got a family connection, too.
Yeah. And I just, you know, it made me mad, and I'm not a wrestler. Never been on the mat. But it made me mad because that is the original Olympic sport.
Well, it certainly makes sense for us to support such an endeavor. We're definitely the right community to send a message. I don't know that any other community could tout to the success that we've had. With that, I think it's a good suggestion, and it can't hurt, and with that, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 2013-04. We have a motion is second by everybody else. I feel pretty good how this vote's been carried. Will there be questions or comments? We'll see if anybody dares to vote. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Demant.
Yes.
Duke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Is there a?
It was a strong yes.
All right, we'll move to item number seven, which is discussion of lectures and propositions to be voted on on April 2nd, 2013, tomorrow. Council members, this is just a opportunity, really, more than anything, to take advantage of some free public airing on the TV, to remind people that we do have two proposition votes tomorrow along with the election of the, of the city council members on my left side, which, you know, my left side, stage left. And, you know, just to, to do it once over of the propositions. It's not, not an attempt to sway one way or the other, other than just to, to remind folks what the questions are and let them make a decision based on this council's suggestion that we go to a vote on these propositions. Proposition number one is a change to the charter. Quick history, when the charter was first written, it required the city manager to live within the city limits. There was a charter election amendment that was offered and voted on the people to expand that to, that the city manager would live within five miles of the city limits, and that seemed to be worked pretty well, and it passed pretty resoundingly. And then, who would have thought that we would seek a city manager that lived 9.5 miles outside of the city limits? Of course, when Mary Rupp was hired, as all of you are aware, she was very much aware of the residency requirement under the charter, and, and actually, tonight, she is, is supposed to begin establishing residency within five miles of the city limits. That was the requirement that she do that on April 1st. This question came about as a result of the special circumstances situation. Now, the question that is before the voters is to allow the city manager to reside within 10 miles of the city limits if the city manager had resided within five miles of the city limits for, I mean, within 10 miles of the city limits for a period of five years prior to being appointed city manager, which certainly Mary qualifies for. I've talked to several, several groups, and I've said it just like this, if this sounds like a special circumstances, something, something for the city manager, you're exactly right. That's exactly what this is. We want to make that clear. It's not a matter of sugarcoating. It's a matter of she living nine and a half miles outside the city limits for 30 years. If the voters would approve her to continue to stay there, that would certainly be a good thing. What it does do is it doesn't, what it doesn't do is it doesn't change that five-mile requirement for any prospective city managers unless, of course, they have lived within 10 miles of city limits for five years or longer. So, anybody coming in from outside of that, from another state or another county, et cetera, et cetera, would have to, would have to comply with the five-mile radius rule unless, of course, another vote by the citizens was taken. So, wanted to clarify that. Wanted to make sure that everybody understands that we're not about to sugarcoat it. We talked about it a long time around this council table. It's about doing something special for Mary and allowing her to stay in her family home. That's proposition number one. Proposition number two, proposition number two deals with the hotel tax. For a number of years, hotel taxes were 5%. For a number of years, hotel taxes were 5%. Proposition suggests that if you vote yes, that the hotel motel tax would be increased from 5% to 8%. That's issue number one. Issue number two is that it would allow those dollars to be pledged for capital improvement projects related to new development. And number three, it clears up the, a loophole dealing with residency for those that are staying in our hotels for a period of 30 days or longer, who, if they do, then can file for residency and not be required to pay the hotel motel tax. I got a late email from the Meachams that did a calculation based on current numbers and roughly at our current residency rate in the hotels. That's equating to about $10,000 annually that we're missing out on, on revenues. So, this is an all or none question with three parts. And so, voting yes approves all three parts. So, if you like some parts of it and don't like others, it's an all or none question. So, I want to take that opportunity to put those out, encourage folks to vote so we can hear from you. As Jim himself would tell you, and everybody's well aware, that the charter is a living, breathing, working document, and this is certainly not the first charter requested change. It won't be the last. Probably, it will probably survive long after we're gone and will always be changed. So, that's the two propositions on the ballot. Encourage everybody to vote. Many of you probably already have. You could be absentee voting, but folks will open bright and early tomorrow. And get out the vote, and we'll see what the citizens say. Any questions or comments related to the propositions? Questions or comments? All right. We'll move to item number eight, city managers' comments.
Starting out on kind of a solemn note tonight, our thoughts and prayers are with the family of Willard Gilbert, a valued employee in the city of Perry who passed away unexpectedly this last weekend. I understand that Willard was a very capable employee and a very hardworking employee, and he will be missed. Hearts go out to his wife and his children at this time. Item number two, fiscal year 14 budget. We're working diligently on that. Departments are scheduled to have their requests in by Friday, this coming Friday. Some of the overachievers have already submitted, so they might get a little extra point or two. I don't know. The initial budget presentation, which I know you'll all look forward to, will be Monday, May 6th. That's our plan. And that would be followed by councils, a special council meeting. We're currently looking at May 22nd, but I'll need to get with all of you and check calendars and make sure that that's going to work. That would be a, I think it's a Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken. Public hearing for citizen input will be June 3rd, and then the final budget adoption would be June 17th. So, we're getting on board with the budget, and I look forward to that. Department heads are very excited about having a role in the budget process and being able to meet with the city council and make their presentations and justifications, and so we'll be ready, hopefully, ready for questions on those. Today, the mayor and the city attorney and I met with the FOP, Fraternal Order for Police, and the IAFF, International Association of Firefighters. We had our first collective bargaining meeting today. Really good, positive, productive discussions, and we'll all reconvene in a couple of weeks and have some more discussions, so. So, look forward to a very good working relationship with both groups, and I know that they've had, you know, good working relationships in the past, and I wouldn't expect anything different at this point. Perry Study Club, I have the pleasure of meeting with this group tomorrow and look forward to hearing their thoughts about Perry. I know I'm supposed to go and tell them about my thoughts about Perry, but I think it's probably just as important to hear what they have to say as well. And so, just, I know that these groups, these individuals have opinions, as all citizens do, but sometimes, until you're asked, you don't really share those as much as you might want to, so. The milling of the runway out of the airport, of the Charles Machine Works, Ditchwich, that the city had entered into an agreement with to mill their old runway in exchange for the millings. And we finalized the contract last week, got all the documents and everything in order, issued the notice to proceed, and it should be happening very soon with the company coming in and get that done. And that way, with, with the being spring, then Ditchwich could go in and plant or, you know, try to establish a ground cover there at that location, so. I do have a report on the water treatment plant project. We've made a lot of progress on that. We've, on the cleaning out the retention ponds, the valves have been located and fixed. The drying bed has been built, and there's a little bit of work, cleanup work to be done around it. We do need to address the pump, pumping the current ponds into the, to the new drying beds, and so we're working through that, trying to evaluate the cost of purchasing a pump versus leasing it, and it looks like it's going to be the most cost effective to lease the pump since we're not going to plan to do this every year. It'd be about an every five or six year process. There's some other things, you know, that we need to address on that part of it. We're also, you know, working on the post chlorination system, working on adjusting the pumps on the 12-inch loop, and so we're making some good progress on that. Finally, the spring cleanup will be here before you know it, Saturday, April 20th. We don't have quite all the details worked out, but we're going to release that information fairly soon. We do have a company that's going to come in and collect tires, and I think we're going to, this company will accept a little larger tire than what the companies have in the past, which is the good news, but they don't, they, they won't accept rims. You have to have the tires off the rims, so. So, that's one difference. We do need volunteers, and so it would, if anyone's interested in volunteering, or any groups interested in volunteering, just give us a call at City Hall, 336-4241, and we'll get your name on the list and be happy to put you to work on Saturday, April 20th. With that, I'd answer any questions.
Questions for the city manager? Questions? Okay. Thank you, Mary. We'll move to item number nine, consider recommendations of Perry Planning Commission concerning commercial and public parking standards for all new construction residential parking area construction standards and take any action deemed appropriate. We have, I believe, David Payne here to go over this with us. And let me just tell you, cut right to the quick, what we're looking for after we go through this presentation is whether or not you all, as a council, are interested in setting a public hearing to discuss these proposed changes with the public. So, David, you're up.
Okay. The standards that have been submitted are standards that we have loosely used for guidance for several years. It never was written into the code, but we have used that as kind of a comparison when approving new parking lots, driveways, such as that. And we've looked at this several times, and finally, we've gained consensus as a planning commission with what has been shown to you. As you probably are aware, our existing code only has about a four-line paragraph requiring a hard surface that doesn't promote dust. That's about it when it comes to paving of parking areas and access drives and things of that nature. This proposal adds meat to that. It defines what those surfaces would be. It allows two inches of asphalted concrete and talks about the base, or four inches of Portland cement on appropriate base. That would be for commercial and residential. It allows, or again, defines what a permanent parking surface should be, and here again, four inches of compacted screenings, this time for residential, on a stabilized base, or four inches of gravel containing, or contained by timbers around the perimeter on an established base, stabilized grade base, or two inches of asphalted concrete, or four inches of Portland cement. So, now we have definitions of what those surfaces would be rather than just a hard surface that doesn't promote dust. It also discusses, or states that it should not promote the pooling of water, so it needs some drainage, things of that nature that we've never had in our code before. An additional thing that's been added are some minimum standards for parking spaces. We have used a code that is a kind of a template that we got from state level that, when it was written, was greatly influenced by compact cars. At that time, they thought that's going to be the way of the future, so it allowed as narrow as eight and a half feet on parking space and fairly short. There are some new standards floating around, and we're, we've looked at those and with some discussion, have written our own minimum parking space standards to be 10 feet wide and, let's see, 21, Gordon, you remember, 22 feet? Gordon attended one of our meetings and was very helpful in giving us some history and guidance on this as well. Let's see, the length is 20 feet. We talked about 21, 22 feet. A extended cab or dual, a four-door pickup requires a very long space, but we didn't feel like it was necessary to make that our minimum standard. But this does accommodate a pickup truck, not a dually per se, but we've increased our minimum standards a little bit from even what the minimums in this template book that we've used, what it recommended. Because I think in this area, our parking requirements are greatly influenced by trucks and pickup trucks, duallys, extended cabs, that thing, that, that sort of thing where maybe the people that write the template for us to use are maybe in Boston or somewhere. I don't know where they live, but they have a lot of compact cars. So, anyway, this is a proposed standard for parking surfaces in parking areas, access driveways, and it does allow for, in the residential area, the requirement for surfaced access driveways may be waived by the Board of Aldermen in areas not designated for its development, and in other areas, if it's determined public convenience, health, or safety is not affected. So, if there's just a, an access drive into a pasture sort of thing, wouldn't be required to have a concrete approach to that. We also had that originally in the commercial area and reworded that some, but it still says requirement for hard surface. Hard surfacing may be waived by the Board of Aldermen in certain storage areas of low traffic access aisles if it is determined that public convenience, health, or safety is not affected. That more specifically addresses things like storage buildings where we would now require a concrete paving from the street edge to the property line, but around the buildings could be gravel. And so, this is, this connects well with the gravel issue that has been discussed separately. So, there it is. Do you have any specific questions about it?
You talked about the different options of gravel, concrete, asphalt to put down. You also made a mention about a suitable base.
Yes.
Is there going to be a testing that they have to provide to us to assure us that the material, where they're putting the material, that base is suitable?
The way we left that was a little open-ended. Rather than get into a lot of specifics and try to put it in print, we said, "as approved by the city street commissioner." Now, the street commissioner could require specific numbers, compaction tests, but it would be up to his discretion to see that it meets whatever he thinks needs to be met. Now, we can go further and put specs in writing if you want to. This is how we left it to prevent getting into all the, those numbers. But it would have to be approved. In each case, it mentions that it must be approved by the street commissioner.
David, just a kind of a sidebar comment, since we changed to the charter, we don't have a street commissioner anymore.
Okay.
And so, that language probably needs to be changed, and I guess it would be either approved by the city manager or the, you know, supervisor for the street department.
Okay.
The commissioner's not an elected position anymore, and I think that was language that is a holdover from that. And I'm also, we mentioned the Board of Aldermen too, and I think that that's an adjustment that needs to be made as a result of the charter as well. The other question that I had, as I read this, I'm assuming this section 12, 231 was the base of the standard that we have now.
Yes.
Correct. It was difficult for me, and maybe it was just the way it was written, but it's difficult for me to identify the changes that you're wanting to make. I mean, you've striked, you've striked the requirement to be waived by the Board of Aldermen. I can see where you did that, but all the new things that you just are wanting us to look at and to possibly implement, I don't see them identified by, by underline for new language.
Okay.
It's, I guess what I'm, I'm trying to make it easier for when we do have the public hearing, for citizens to be able to detect what the old language was and the new language and the deleted language, et cetera. I didn't know if that was an oversight or...
I can offer a little bit inside. The current, 1231, 12, 231 now, I think he said four lines. It's three or four sentences. It's a real short paragraph is all it is. It basically just says it needs to be hard surface. That is the entire section at this point.
So, is new added here?
All of this is new.
Yeah, well, but it appears whenever you strike out something within that period, it appears that that's the only change, that the rest of this is old language.
I think that, I think that was from where we, the original language that we started with.
Exactly. Yeah, that was, those have carried over within our meeting, I think, because in some previous discussions, we had it written a certain way. In this last discussion, we had struck out a sentence and had changed some wording. That was within our proposals we were dealing with, not comparing the facts to the city code.
Well, but the rest of this, like, like striking, et cetera, that's all old language? Or is this proposed?
This is all new.
Right. So, it's just, my suggestion for the public is to be, is to indicate a public hearing. You would normally do that with an underline, you know, that it were a new, it's a new section that's created new language.
Okay. We need to include the old 12, 231.
What, but, right, because when you start talking about one paragraph with all these references to street commissioner, it made me believe that we were operating under old language and that this wasn't new language.
It was, we started writing this back that long ago.
And we overlooked it. Changes.
We will clean all that up. What we did is we sent this the way that the proposal was written, and really, the purpose of this is to just let the council see it, and if they want to, then we need to direct that a public hearing be held in front of them, that notice be given, and then it would come back to you in final form. These errors would be changed, and you would be able to see exactly the changes that have been made.
Does this reflect, and it'd be obvious that I, that I haven't read every word of this, in here somewhere, David, does it reflect the need to look at, look at drainage issues related to putting these non-permeable surfaces down?
It only, if I remember correctly, it only says that you should not, it would not allow the pooling of water. I think that's...
So, it doesn't direct any runoff concerns that may, that may come from?
I don't think it does.
On page four, in the permanent surfing, permanent surfacing paragraph, it does say will be sloped and drained to prevent standing pools of water. I think that's, could be expanded there for, you know, have positive drainage away. But, and as the mayor's pointing out, in the other areas where we're, where we're allowing rock, we should say the same, similar thing that should be graded in a way to drain.
Okay.
Just saying preventing pools is, oh, I tried, but I couldn't. So, you just need to make sure it's, that positive drainage away from the structures or to a drainage way such as a ditch, channel, or whatever. Could we, could we not say instead of street commissioner, your public works director and or?
It's whatever the council wants to designate.
I'm still a little concerned about my question. Leaving it up to the public works director or somebody to determine the surface, because what happens whenever he's wrong? You know, you go out there and they put gravel down, it ruts up. What meat do we have then to be able to tell that person? It's got to be redone.
Gordon, what could we put in print that would ensure that?
Well, ultimately, the site plan review would be approved by this body, whatnot. Even still.
Right.
But if we require...
But do we have the knowledge to be able to say that that service is all right? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, we, while we might not have the knowledge, you know, the buck stops with us.
Is there a compaction figure?
We could...
I'm just asking, do we have, do we have the right to tell that person, okay, we were wrong, you need to go put down more gravel?
I believe we should have that, but that would first come with... I believe we should have that, but that would first come with the public works director, doing his diligence or her diligence, and then the research necessary to make sure that these, the compacted subgrade is truly a compacted subgrade and will hold the weight of the paving and the vehicles using it. We can go into a lot of detail on specification of subgrades and aggregates, to a point that we, we could post a little book that's...
You can write a book.
A dime-sized novel would be about that thing. At some point, we, we want to address the specifications specific to our paving and parking and all this kind of stuff. At this time, where we are is to improve what we got, that's what we're trying to do, and I don't think we can cover all the bases in, in five or six pages of, of a design request. That's why we got to depend on the expertise of the people we hired, to call a lab to come out and check it. They can come out and run densities on your subgrades and make sure they meet a compaction specified for, for clay or sand area, and if it doesn't, then what you do, modify it to make it meet. The labs can tell you that, but generally, in this area, any high plastic clays are going to have to have some line to stabilize. And that can be, that can be determined by taking a sample of that clay to a lab for testing. I know that if, if requested by the city manager or the public works director, ODOT might be willing to run some of those small, simple test for you, if their workload is not too high. But still, there's standard testing, there's Terracan, there's a number of other testing firms around Oklahoma City area and Tulsa that, and, and even, they can run those kinds of tests for you, and they're not that expensive.
And also adding a mat between the gravel and the subgrade is another approach, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. To keep the dirt migrating into your pavements or your aggregates.
Do we have any teeth in this, where if somebody goes out and just rocks their gravel or something, that we have the right to go in and say, "you've got to redo this"? Is there any teeth to this?
It's on public property, I believe we do. Well...
Now, these comments, I've added a maintenance provision.
This is public property.
Yeah.
This is being commercial.
It's commercial, but they're asking for a permit to do it. So that gives you your teeth, the permit to do is based on these requirements.
But if they go in and don't do it the way they're supposed to, do we have the right to go back in and say, "no, this isn't right, and you need to..."
Well, I, I can tell you that, but I think, of course you do.
You refuse the occupancy permit.
And we will spell it out. We will spell it out, we will provide for continued maintenance provisions and, and right to correct if it's not correct.
And you can refuse the occupancy permit, can't you?
Yes.
Which would come after this.
Absolutely.
Give them a permit for use for whatever it is.
Right.
We can shut their electricity off.
We could, we could plug their sewer line.
When you all, when you all go back to look at this stuff, we may be messing, we're just playing with semantics more than anything, but on the approval process, and I think somebody suggested maybe the public works director or something, let me encourage you to consider maybe naming the city manager as the ultimate authority for that.
Sure.
Or his or her designate.
Designate.
Because every city manager's going to come with their own organizational chart, and that may include the public works director and it may not.
Okay, good point.
And so that'll keep us from having to change it over and over. I think we'll, as a charter community, we'll always have a city manager.
Yep.
Have that, so give that some thought too. Let's, other questions, comments? Let's be sure that we have, you know, all of, at least as councils, you know, questions and see the language before we, you know, approve to go to a public meeting on this, and so with your blessing, I, you know, I'd just like to lay this over until we can get another round from you guys, and see some language, and, and then send it to a public meeting, if that's agreeable.
Sure, well, I think this has been very good input.
That's good. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, David. Anything else on, on this topic? Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move to item number 10, new business. I see new business needs to come before body. New business? Seeing none, you have item number 11, which is considering, convening into executive session to discuss negotiations concerning the local 4242 and the IAFF and Fraternal Order of Police. I know that when you're sitting at home and you're watching this, and the council goes into executive session, everybody would love to be a fly on the wall. And I, and while executive sessions are necessary and are important to discuss specifically, in this case, personnel-related matters, I think Mary gave you a very good report today that we did meet with the Fraternal Order of Police and the, and the firefighters. It was a good session, there was a lot of good, open discussion about, about how those contracts might look. There were several things that were brought to us as it related to, to what potential dollars, what the cost may be to the city, if their ideas and suggestions were implemented. They regrettably, they both made good presentations, but they regrettably did not equate actual dollar figures to their request. And so we want to take, I would like to take, you know, until our next council meeting to figure out what those dollars are, because that's the questions that you are going to ask in executive session. So in light of us just reporting in executive session, what Mary did in open session, I don't see a need to do the executive session. It's just, we wouldn't report anything different than she already has, because we don't have numbers. If you all would like that executive session, it's here, and I'll certainly entertain a motion to, to do it, but if it's not necessary, I just don't think it's worth people's time. Questions or comments related to that? Would you like to go into executive session? It's on your agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to item number 14.
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn not available, we'll call three.
Yes.
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 Yes.